Good morning. We called this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda with the addition.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve with the addition of an appointment to the Extension Committee.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, second and third discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve for the payment of bills and vouchers. We've got a motion to approve the bills and vouchers.
Second.
We've got a second. Any discussion on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from June 6th. Motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the minutes from June 6th. Any discussion on the bills? Excuse me, on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda item is request to approve an appointment to the Extension Committee. You speaking to that, or are you?
Cecilia.
Oh, okay. We can wait a minute. You can do some committed reports while you're waiting for it.
We can wait, Cecilia.
Very good. Okay, Paul, you want to start us out today?
Happy to. Okay, well, on Tuesday after the board meeting, we had a Board of Appeals and Equalization. Just want to say thank you to Nancy and Gunderson, our assessor, with a great reporting background. And also to Greg, extend thanks for all the good communication that they did with people, I think. Were questions on it. It wasn't easy with a lot of egg lines going up by 45%, but we listened to four appeals. Things were held as sent out, so no changes made. But I thought the... It was my first time, so I thought that all went very well. And after that, I was curious about the certified training, so Nancy talked to me about that. And I will actually be doing the online training with Department of Revenue to become a certified member for the assessment. What else? Next day, I was at my very first quarterly meeting for the Clay County Extension. I may have Commissioner Mojo elaborate a little more, but one of the items that will be taken up in just a minute, we had the approval... Our recommendation of the board for Mr. Rick Hall for a new three-year term on the Extension Committee. And also, and this is where I will extend it over to Jenny, I think. We just went through a lot of board items that were new for me, but I'm happy to be part of the group, look forward to it. Back in my younger days, I was part of 4H for many years, showing sheep, gardening, and other things. And active at the Clay County Fair. At the Clay County Fair this year, and on Sunday, July, what, 15th, 16th? Somewhere in that ballpark. Sorry, don't have the calendar. I will be part of a meet and greet that Extension will have down there.
Sunday, the 16th.
What?
The 16th.
16th. And we'll be giving some awards out for well-done services by people in the county. The next day, on the 15th, Thursday, I was at a quarterly Board of Directors meeting for the Greater Fargo Morehead Economic Development Corporation, EDC. The main gist of that, again, Commissioner Reba is on that executive committee. But really, last time was a lot about workforce, this time is looking at the organization itself, looking at setting up a new internal governance structure, which means, right now, it's currently a 33-member board. Shrink that board down to about 12 to 15, make it a little more... Not quite so cumbersome for making decisions. But with that, not to try to add more value to that meeting, they're going to expand working groups, get more input from the members that are part of the EDC, so they can have... You know, we'll have more expertise in each area. The working groups are the same as committees. Those committees, working groups, bring it to Advisory Committee. That will hone it down to the Executive Board, which Dave's on. And then bring to our quarterly meeting issues that pertained to the EDC for approval on a quarterly basis. One thing I will say that group is, and what it's involved with is growing at a rapid speed. And I'm, you know, and their help through the... Our area of Casing, Clay County in particular, you know, is growing all the time. And the amount of worldwide, global exposure of Fargo Morehead area is now starting to get is pretty remarkable. Then, later that day, MetroCog had their monthly meeting and went through their other reports. I do want to... A little lost here where I put that. Wanted to make a note to that meeting. Jenny might have a couple other things. But they're in the process of becoming a... I lost it. Management... A metro. Yeah, no, M-PU. Anyway. Thank you, thank you. I apologize this morning. So anyway, with that, there's a lot of new work coming to that. That would put us in a position, the way we plan. The only other place in the state that has this is the actual metropolitan area. What it puts you in place for is larger grants and a more comprehensive plan, I think, that will empower our area also. So that's... And then we had a really good, I thought, a really good presentation. It was about 15-minute thing, and then we... Presentation, and it was part of a video, but online, from Mendot regarding the state's look at a carbon reduction strategy. Again, this year, we got $7.1 million coming in for the whole state. And again, that's... That comes not only just about EV, you know, throughout our transportation lines, but a whole other criteria involving just ways to reduce carbon throughout our state, United States, globally. So those are just a couple of highlights of that, real quick. And then, again, one more new meeting for me, as the new guy here. I was at District 4 meeting with all the other commissioners in Fergus Falls. Highlights of the reports by our... Is it 10 districts in our group, if I remember right? And anyway, reports on each district, what they were doing. Others can elaborate on this. And then also the overview that AMC helps us with on guidance during the legislative session. And I think there are many good outcomes. The ones in my area that really I thought were empowering is going to be housing, the amount of housing, whether it's helping the homeless or into the, what I will call attainable housing. A lot of people call it affordable housing, but affordable to me is a little subjective. And... Or is attainable, and that's what's important, down payment assistance programs and grants coming through the state. So with that, a couple of quick highlights of things I was involved with last week. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to our regular meetings, see if you want to come forward with Mr. Hall. Sure your green button is on on your mic?
Good morning, Commissions. Thank you for having us this morning. Our appearance today is to showcase our new potential Extension Committee member, Rick Hall. And Rick with us this morning to kind of share a little bit about his background and just open up the conversation for any questions that you may have for Rick. And then obviously, get your approval to appoint Rick. So, Rick.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Hall.
Well, I'm glad to be here. I think this is a long overdue appearance, because I think you probably be interested in some of the things we are involved in. And so I'm glad to be here. I'm warning you that I'm going to ask for another 10-minute appearance sometime soon, because we've got a lot to present. And I want to, before I forget it, invite you, there is a tour of farms in this west-central area that is going on later this week. And it is going to have a... I think it's actually the inauguration of the tour at Prairie Rose Farm in... Here in Clay County, out in Morehead Township. And you are all invited at 5:30, 5:30 to 8:00. There's going to be food. And there is also quite a delegation of the Minnesota Department of Agriculture going to be there. We met with the Assistant Commissioner last couple of weeks ago, and toured him around. And there's some promise that Tom, the Commissioner, is going to come later this summer. So just wanted to alert you to that and give you a warm invitation. I think you have... My bio was sent around, I think. And so I don't need to bore you with... I was born in New Mexico and all that. I grew up in Fargo, went away for 50 years, came back to Morehead about nine years ago. And so in those 50 years, I did a lot of traveling. I lived in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for 20 years, working with urban gardening and community organizing and creating nonprofit organizations there, primarily in the Spanish-speaking community. And then came back to Wisconsin and lived 20 years at Osceola, Wisconsin, on the St. Croix, creating a community farm that served the Twin Cities area and the St. Croix Valley. It's still going. And we were able to hand it off to other people when we made a rather quick exit here because of my wife's cancer, and of which she is cured. And so being only in our 70s, we decided we really had to launch a few more initiatives. So that's how we got here. On the card, the little card that I sent around, there are four initiatives, I think. Or it's grouped in four initiatives. It's more than that. But basically Prairie Rose Farm, out in Morehead Township. It's actually has a Felton address. It's on 50th Street North, so we're practically in Cragness Township, across the road. So Prairie Rose Farm is a demonstration education farm for... That's focusing primarily on small farm regenerative practices. We're right in the middle of big farms. In fact, Verna grew up a mile across the field at the Cragness Farm. And so her brother is just retired this last year. He's getting very fidgety because he's not growing anything this year. But the Cragnesses are a long time... Russell Cragness is her father, and there's a lot of Cragnesses in the neighborhood. So we're familiar with large-scale agriculture. Our mission has been to revive small-scale agriculture and to help create access to farmland for beginning farmers. And so that's basically what we're setting up to do, to demonstrate the, you know, latest regenerative practices, best practices. We have several high tunnels that are in the process of construction. And we have some small-scale tractors and farm equipment that we're also demonstrating. We host... We're now the host of New Roots Farm Incubator, which basically educates and provides space for new American farmers. And started on... About four years ago, on land just north of Dilworth. That landowner decided he didn't want to continue the lease. So some of the farmers have moved out to Prairie Rose for their kind of next stage of building up their farm enterprises. And then, some of the other farmers were able to renegotiate with the landowner north of Dilworth. So there's actually two New Roots incubator farms right now. And let's see, what else should I tell you? Basically, that has catapulted us into... We're also urban agriculture, urban farmers. I've spent a lot of time doing urban farming, community gardens, that kind of stuff. And so we have an urban initiative, and it's called the Youth Food and Ecology Initiative. And it is just launching a youth stewards program this summer on a small scale with youths 14 to 20, to introduce them to gardening, to basic pollinator gardens. So food, and that's where the food and ecology comes in, is that we're teaching them about growing food and also about how to plant pollinator gardens. The project is at the First Congregational UCC Church at 4th Avenue and 9th Street South. Or that's where it's headquartered. And a project soon to begin is we're tearing up some of the parking lot, the asphalt parking lot, and removing the asphalt and putting in pollinator gardens. And that's also a demonstration. This is a trend that seems to be happening in church parking lots around the country. And... But in other places, to see if we can reduce the amount of impervious surfaces and add in some green to the overpaved urban landscape. And so that's the latest edition of the project. On the card, I think there's Farming and Conservation Partners is... Has a small beginning, small demonstration in Cragness Township, which Verna and her sisters... My wife is Verna Cragness, and she should probably be here too to... So she can have another 10 minutes sometime. She has a lot to say. But basically, we're trying to demonstrate how you can, in the sale of a property, you can make the land available to small-scale and underserved farmers. In this case, a large part of the land went to Melanie Thomas, who is a beginning farmer, related to the Thomas family. And then 11 acres was... No, about 12 acres was reserved for a new American farmer. And so Calla Tenampagasi has purchased that. So he's one of the first new American farmers in Clay County, and to actually own some land. And that's sort of the picture that we'd like to continue, not only new Americans, but other new farmers, because as you know, it's pretty hard to gain access to farmland. And we are trying to make sure that... Or find those places where this would be an appropriate fit.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. I... Rick, good to meet you. We were excited when Cecilia brought forth your name of interest at the Extension Committee last week. You certainly have a background of so many different experiences that I feel will really be helpful, because Extension really does cover so many different facets of everything food-related, but even more so. So both Commissioner Krabonovt and I serve on that committee, and we'll look forward to working with you further in that endeavor. I will make a motion to approve the recommendation of appointing Rick Hall to the three-year term on the Extension Committee.
Okay. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? I did have one item. You mentioned something about this week at 5:30. Do you have a place where it's at, or?
Sure. It's at the Prairie Rose Farm, which is on 50th Street North. It's... Oh, my gosh.
Can I get the information to Jacqueline to share with everybody?
Yeah, we'll send you the address. It's 1346050th Street North, but I'll confirm that. I don't... I live in town, so I don't use my address.
We'll get the information from you, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll continue. Jenny?
Thank you. Do you want to come here? It's okay, come here. Sorry, I've got little helpers today, so one of them is going to come help me give my report. Thank you. Okay, last week, I attended the MetroCog committee meeting with Commissioner Krabonovt. Commissioner Krabonovt did a really great job of presenting that. I think one item to note, on June 29th at 12:30, there will be a special joint meeting of the Metropolitan Council of Government presentation for all the municipalities. So make sure and attend if possible. It was the first time that I had had the opportunity to meet the new director, Ben, in person. Ben Griffin is joining the group, and really feel that it will be helpful to have his leadership. And a side conversation that happened after that meeting was I did reach out to MetroCog and Commissioner Campbell and our Administrator Steve in regards to the mat bus stops and planning and future planning development to see if our facilities, specifically the transfer station and withdrawal management center, could be serviced by a mat bus stop. So we will be having a conversation later about that. I, earlier that day, attended the AMC District 3 meeting in Norman County. Really great to join the conversation and hear from all of those representatives, all the way from Polk County, all the way to Roseau, on their issues. And that played into the District 4 meeting that Commissioner Krabonovt reported on Friday. All of us had the opportunity to attend. AMC just really doubled down and went above and beyond in terms of how they were coordinating and communicating with counties on the legislative sessions. So appreciate their work. It really has been helpful as we unpack the legislative packages, really, and how they will affect counties. Good updates from all of the communities. Really excited to hear so many of the things that other counties are working on implementing. We've really have already implemented in Clay County. A lot of that has because of some of the proactive stances we've taken on other items. But really exciting to have other communities reach out to Clay County to see what works and what hasn't worked, and how could implementation be helpful. A follow-up to the Extension Committee report, as Commissioner Krabonovt also reported on. We did have discussions regarding the budget and making sure, since we have new office staff there, making sure that if they had any questions, reached out to us before submitting that with Cecilia. One item is that the 4H coordinator, Macy Millier, is the one that we had got to 0.8 last round of budget discussions, was hired as the new regional coordinator... Or not regional coordinator, but a regional position. So the advertising for her position will be starting soon. One piece with legislative issues that was interesting is soil and water conservation districts really received a large increase in funding opportunities. And Cecilia had reported that one community was in the process of using some of those SWCD funds to hire or pay for the ag piece. And so in our community... Or our county, that would be Randy Nelson's position. And so wondering if there could be SWCD funds that we leverage and apply to other areas, would that help us out with other positions? So interesting item. Are you watching yourself on the computer? But that then does complete my report. Thank you.
On June 15th, we had a Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Budget Committee meeting. And, you know, we were hopeful that our goal would be that we could go into 2024 without a tipping fee increase. But there were several factors that bring this to probably, it's like a 3.9% increase, which would amount to about $12,000 to Clay County for our investment into the facility. But so that includes a 2.5% COLA for 2024. And I started asking some questions about how did they arrive at that? Because it's different than what Otter Tail County does. And so they just did their own thing, and it's just been that. And so I questioned, you know, last year, we had the same issue there with hiring. And so we had to make adjustments to our whole table to fix that. And I said, you know, if we're not careful, we're going to... And if we don't do this right, we're going to end up in that same position again, not being able to hire. With what they've done now, to give you an example, what they... On some of those plate job positions, when they used to have openings, they'd get maybe two people apply. In this most recent one now, they had 15 apply. So you can see the difference in what making sure you have an appropriate compensation package does. So I suggested that our... The administrator reach out to all member counties and see what their 2023 COLA was. And to maybe consider going to like the Triple RDC does and take an average of all member counties' COLAs and using that as one going forward. You're always a year behind, but at least you're not falling behind by setting something too low. So that... We're looking at that right now, and that could make some little bit of an adjustment. The other thing where I was hoping that we could avoid that is because over the last few years, we have had revenues over expenditure increases, and we've been able to up our value of our cash balance, or in other words, reserves, like we have, like every government entity has. The bad part about that is that on the five-year plan, we have needs of $2,370,000 in capital issues, whether it's equipment or major work on the facility. And with our current fund balance, after we bought this latest dozer, we have $750,000 in there. And if we keep going with the $250,000 that we have in our budget annually for internal service, at the end of that five-year period, we'd have $2 million in there, and we need $2,370,000. So again, we'd be falling short. And so to offset that, what I've suggested that we do is the $1 million that's in the bank at the end of this year, if we continue to move forward, that we take half of that balance and shift it over to the Internal Service Account. So that boosts that up. So at the end of that five-year period, we would still be $250,000 ahead, plus then be able to build again for the next go-round of five-year options. So, so with that, I, you know, I was kind of hoping we could probably avoid a tipping fee increase. But I think, I think in light of preparing for more expenses coming down the road, a slight increase is probably not a bad thing. And that also included a, a, there were other increases with property insurance and some of those things that brought that price up a little bit. On Friday, the 16th, I also attended the District AMC meeting. I thought it was informative, well-done. I was particularly interested to hear on what other counties have done COVID and, and after COVID regarding work from home. And I think the policy seemed to be on the most part, kind of, we seem to be kind of matching up with all other areas. There's a couple of them that do expand a little bit more than what we do and there's some counties that are a little bit less than what we do. So we're kind of right in the middle there. But I think overall, the consensus seems to be that, that that's not going to go away. And, and, which I'm, I was glad to hear because I, I do think that's appropriate. And it, and it, they did say that in some instances, like with our intention now is to, part of our goal all along was to reduce the need for, for space. And I think now we need to focus a little bit more on implementing that piece of it and I think we'll, then it'll really show its worth. Other than that, they, there was a lot of, a lot of good information. There was some information on, on radio and all that. And I think maybe Chief Yul, or, or former Chief Yul, you'll, you'll talk about that. The, the Next Generation 911 Emergency Communications Network, that was very interesting. And it kind of ties into a lot of stuff we're doing with Triple RDC, so, and funding, 911 funding. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I also, as all of us did, we're at the County Board of Equalization after last week's meeting. Commissioner Krabinoff gave a good representative, good presentation on that, but I want to make one observation, particularly for the attention of our county Administrator Steve Larson. Invariably, every person that came before us to talk about their concerns on property valuations made a point to indicate how polite and courteous and supportive and informative our staff was. And that really speaks well, at the AMC meeting, I mentioned this to a couple of folks from other counties and they shook their head and said, gee. Ours, ours were pretty, pretty acrimonious at times. We didn't have that and I think it's the tone that was set by our staff. And I would like to extend my gratitude to them, not just that it made our job easier, but that they're so supportive of our citizens in this county. On the 15th, I also attended the Greater Fargo Morehead EDC Board Meeting. Just Commissioner Krabinoff covered that fairly well, but I would kind of want to get in the weeds on what the draft governance structure is. They've had a governance committee together, working on this for about a year. And frankly, I think, as you look at the history, when Commissioner Campbell was the at-large member on the board in the position that Commissioner Krabinoff has, and I've heard Commissioner Mojo indicate this, there's always been a concern that EDC is, gets majority of their funding from public sources. And the majority of their work product is for private industry or private businesses. This is something that this governance board wanted to address. So just not to get too deep in the weeds, but the new board will no longer have the at-large positions that have been given to govern governmental, public sectors. They'll replace that, those at-large positions with two Cass County Representatives, one Clay County, one Fargo, one Morehead, and one West Fargo. The role of two Cass County members reflects the large amount of money that's being directed into the organization by the state of North Dakota that's overseen with the fiduciary responsibilities being in Cass County. So I'm comfortable with the fact that they have a higher level of representation. They've got more skin in the game. The other sector, the other positions will be five prime sector representatives. These are going to be CEOs, presidents, directors of the, of the businesses, and then up to six local industry representatives. Again, no specified, or actually no openings, other than the ones in the public sector for elected officials. The new executive committee is going to be seven voting members and they are not going to have members on that unless they choose, the president chooses an at-large, large from the board. They're not going to have representatives that are specifically identified as public sector. They're also going to set up an advisory board and that is going to be twice a year. And it may or may not include elected officials. It will also include higher education, K through 12, 12 partners, and private investors of 5,000 or more a year. And they will meet to address specific issues identified by the board. There will also be working groups. They've broken them into higher ed, development, real estate, marketing, communications, community development, target sectors, workforce flourishing, which is an objective of the EDC, as stated in their, their goals, and then data analytics. I don't want to beat this horse to death, but although it appears that we're having a reduction in our governmental presence, in reality, we are shifting the composition of this board to reflect the expectation in the funding sources. Although there'll continue to be public funding in the, into the EDC and indeed with the Chamber, which is partnering with the EDC in so many efforts. This is going to be a concerted effort to shift into the private sector, more of the financial responsibility for the organization. While I was at the EDC meeting, the Clay County Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition had their monthly meeting. I want to thank city staff, or county staff, for recording that meeting. I've finally got to sit down and look at it yesterday. Very interesting meeting. Ken Beavis of the Smart Approach to Marijuana Minnesota, Sam, was present. They're an organization that's part of a national movement to address marijuana legislation. He was not acrimonious. He was not inappropriate, but he was clearly a man who was very unhappy with the results of the last legislative session. And he had information, which I'm familiar with from other organizations, and I've seen ever since Colorado has passed theirs, that really does indicate that marijuana in the community presents a, a real problem when you look at the impact on youth. Also, he identified the real problem we've got with local control in this legislative session. There was a bit of a, a back and forth, again, in a very appropriate way between a couple of members of the board and Mr. Bean is on his ideas. There, there will be a presentation in the next meeting on more or less the pro marijuana legislative side. One of the things that I think we need to be aware of is a cannabis management board has no mandate for education or prevention until 2025. We're going to start this for two years with no education money coming from the state or prevention, other than what's already out there. And I think what's even more disturbing is basically no rules and regulations to set up for production, distribution, and sales. Those regulations and those mandates are going to come once this management board is put together and they're going to figure it out. Unfortunately, the idea that we are avoiding a black market by legalizing marijuana before we have a legitimate control on private production of it is a little disturbing to me. So that's an issue that remains to be seen. Following that, we did have a, a good presentation from Ashley Lemke. She's with First Link. The 988 line is, has received a great deal of funding from the state of North Dakota. First Link serves both Clay County and Cass County and other parts of North Dakota. So funding from North Dakota was very important. They're doing a lot of things they needed to do with hiring staff. State of Minnesota, in the last session, did pass legislation to set up a, a funding through a 911, or a, the phone bill funding, just like 911 funding is supplied. So you'll get a little extra on your phone bill, but it's for a good, good, good purchase of services. Later that day, I met with a, a group that has been put together by Rhonda Porter and Pastor Sue at Churches United. And for the most part, with this meeting, it was staff from both, both Social Services and Churches United and me. We had a discussion on some of the real problems being faced with committing people for mental health treatment when they're in shelter. And I won't go too deep in the weeds in this, but I think the key issue is that, number one, commitment's not the silver bullet everybody thinks it is. I knew that from my days as a cop. Even if you get a 72-hour hold, which is difficult, particularly since we have no medical facilities in this state, and we have to take them to North Dakota, even with the hold, even with a civil commitment. Minnesota law is structured in a way that you cannot make someone do what they don't want to do. So another disturbing factor I was unaware of, civil courts think, assume, make the assumption that even if someone has mental health issues that are profound, that if they're in shelter, they're in a safe place. This totally disregards one of the cold, hard facts about people in our community with unaddressed mental health crises. They may be in a safe place, but the other people in that shelter and the staff of that shelter very often aren't. They're not staffed to deal with people who are, who lose it because of mental health issues. They're not staffed to protect the, the other people within that shelter and protect the person with mental health issues. It just isn't a structure that is amenable to that. The answer is, we have no answer. We do not have the, the facilities. We do not have the resources in the state of Minnesota, in this day and age, to take care of the people that have mental health issues, particularly those who have no insurance. So this is going to be an ongoing discussion. There was some good input. There may be law enforcement, maybe corrections needs to be part of the discussion. I know this, we're running into the problem we've always run into, is this overlaps with a lot of people's, a lot of people's portfolio. I've worked with, with Churches United since, long before I was a commissioner. And I'm just willing to take this. I don't need it in my portfolio. If, if there are concerns with me attending this meeting, or if they want to send in, in addition, another county commissioner, I have no problem with that. This is just something, I've got some knowledge in and I've got a lot of commitment to see us do something. I addressed this through most of my, my professional career, somewhat successfully in my prior employment outside of the state of Minnesota. And that's what, one of the things that disturbs me, is we found a pretty good answer in Arkansas. And we don't have any answers here. And it's something we need to address. So I will, I will continue. They're planning to continue those meetings and I'd like to just let everybody know, I, I want to continue. If any other commissioners have some input for me or have a desire to participate in this, I have no problem with that. I just feel like I should be there, particularly since I have prior work with, with people who were very much involved in this in the shelter community. Later that day, which was a marathon day, I might add, I looked down here and see where I've left off. I attend the Lake Agassy Regional Library Finance Committee meeting. We improved the budget, which has been sent to Commissioner Larson to work with us on the, or to work in the, into our budget plans. And I'm looking for my notes here. Basically, Finance Committee approved and sent on the budget, which was approved later by the full board meeting that night. But the budget, basically Clay County, the bottom line on that is it's an additional $8,055 for the two-point, and I don't have the percentage, but it's, it's a little north of 2% increase this year. A lot of that's been absorbed in the overall 4.3% increase in the budget. It's not all being passed on to us. They've got other areas that they've addressed. So I think it's reasonable and, and it did pass from the, the overall, the full board meeting that occurred after that. We had some general business. And then following the Finance Committee meeting later that night, we had a full board meeting. Couple of things on that. We will be getting additional funding, which we've applied for from the state with some of the new legislations occurred. Have no idea how much is going to be coming to the Lake Agassy Board and, or to the Morehead Library until all of this is figured out. They probably won't know until almost December. We did pass the final budget recommendation. And we approved a memorandum of agreement to make Juneteenth a holiday so we could close the library in accordance with state regulations. And then I attended the District Four meeting on the 16th with the rest of the commissioners. And again, I know I'm, I'm going long on this, but I'm going to expedite. The one thing, it was a great meeting, as usual. AMC did a great job giving us updates on legislation. We did have Marcus Burning and, or Bruning and Kent Wilken, Wilkenning, former sheriff. They're with the Department of Public Safety Emergency Communication Network now. They didn't get into the weeds on this, but I just want to make the commission and, and the public aware. All the changes with Next Generation 911, all the things that are happening with smartphones, with video. We are still, we still have state law, the statute that governs the, the emergency communication network and armor and all the other components of emergency communications in this state is over 20 years old. We have gone through three legislative sessions trying to get an update through and it fails every time. And the reason is, there's some emergency communicate, or there's some communication industries that don't want it to change because the services they provide on a hard-wire phone on the wall that rings and goes through copper wire to get to 911. There are services that they provide to help identify the location of that call to 911 that is based on 90 to 98% of those calls coming in on hard-wire phones. Right now, 8% of them do. But we seem to run into issues trying to update it because that would cut back on the amount of money that's paid to these private companies. And they've done wonderful work. And they've done wonderful work in years past to help set up a 911 system that can identify hard-wire calls. Right now, it is cheaper and it is easier. Once we get into Next Generation 911, there will be money involved in making the transition, but we don't need 95% of our calls to receive these services. We need about 8% of them. And the cost that the state is paying will still be predicated on having the majority of those calls coming in as hard-wire. So that's the reason we can't update a statute that's incredibly outdated. So we're going to try again next session, and I hope we can get AMC to take this on as a primary issue, and I hope that our fellow commissioners in other counties become aware, and we get our state legislators up to speed on what these real issues are. They're under an intense lobbying presentation by the private sector, and it's not that they're in anybody's pocket, it's that they're getting information, they believe it, it's a very complicated issue. And in a session like the one we had recently, it's hard to take six hours off and get updated when, when you think the lobbyists have already given you the, the inside track. So that's the only thing we had a District Four I'm going to touch on. I appreciate everybody's patience, but I, I had a heck of a week. It's all I've got. Thank you.
Wednesday morning, I attended the Wild Rise Watershed Board Meeting in Ada. Just a routine meeting there, other than Mark Harless, who's our representative from Clay County, I think is not running again, so we're going to start looking for another representative from Clay County for that board. That night, I went to Highland Grove, excuse me, Mullen Township, and Justin Starham went with me, and we had a good discussion there with the places, they're going over road conditions and stuff like that, and had some good questions, a good meeting. From there, we went to Highland Grove's meeting, and Justin went with me there, too, and a lot of discussion there on roads, too, and stuff like that. More discussion on County, County 115, and so, which Wayne Lepper likes to work on. I mean, I guess he's got a good point, that he needs some, something done with that road and eventually get done, I hope, for him, so. Saturday, I went to the Felton Field Days, which is just a routine thing, that went in the parade there again, just love those parades. Oh, excuse me, on Friday, there, two hours at the District Four meeting. We got a new director, I guess, an alternate director, Bill Sterns from Edina County, was elected the district director, alternate director is Bill LaValle from Grant County. And again, I guess it was interesting on the 911 self, Next Generation 911, and I guess Dave pretty well covered that. And I mean, for broadband, we're getting $100 million over the next two years, you know, $60 million on broad, border to border grant, and $40 million for lower-density areas. So hopefully that gets spent well, get the whole county covered. I was, I got a map from the, of our broadband coverage in the county, and I was very surprised that we probably only have covered over by, so by broadband. So other than that, those are my meetings. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, on the 14th, we had county management, we talked about the 2024 budget. We've had some discussion from a market study standpoint, in 2024, implementation in 25, so we're looking at timelines to make sure that our department heads have PDQs, job descriptions up to date. On the 29th, the, the county's going to be participating through the Chamber with a kind of a, I guess, a presentation of what, what county government is, and what opportunities there are. We're going to be speaking to local educators from 1:00 to 3:00 on the 29th about opportunities in county government. On the 14th, we also met with Lori Johnson and Tony Anderson from the state on the DMV about potential collaboration of space and trying to get some specific answers from the state in regards to the DMV project. I hope to have some information by board, for board next Tuesday. On the 15th, we had MCC, JPA prep meeting. We are scheduled to have a meeting this coming Thursday, but may have to look at changing that due to a quorum issue. We talked about property acquisition, appraisal review, and a contracting action. On the 15th, also, I met with Rocky Schneider, Stephen Slick of AE2S, with representatives from Moorehead Public Service, just providing them an overview of the West Central Regional Water District project that this board has signed on moving forward. I had a real good dialogue, and again, kind of, they just asked to be kept up to date with the, the direction of, of that project. Friday, participated in the AMC District meeting, I think that's been covered well. The only thing I would just note, you all probably received an email this morning from AMC, they're looking for volunteers to serve on different task forces and, and committees, five of them. And so if you're so inclined, it looks like July 10th is the deadline for that, to submit for. And then just note those coming in from the north side of the county into the Government Center on 34th Avenue, or 34th, excuse me, we, there's a detour from, from 4th Avenue to 12th Avenue, right by, in between there by the golf course. And so there's a detour that'll take you, take you around to Main Avenue and then cut across at 34th Street. So that concludes my report. It sounds like that'll be two weeks, it sounds like.
Okay. Thank you. Bye.
Can I just ask, on our upcoming events, it, it says there's a special joint meeting with Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Council of Governments on the 29th. Could, somebody tell me what that's about?
That's the one I reported on.
Okay, okay.
They're doing that so that they don't have, just to save time, so you're not going to every single meeting and doing the report 10 times, felt like any questions then came up. It would be helpful for the whole crew. So it is posted, so you're all welcome to come.
Thank you.
Miles, where's your?